August the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P. M. Welcome to you all that are here tonight, which the first and third Tuesday was like this every Tuesday night, and also welcome to our Facebook Live viewers. Thank you all for watching afar. Please remember to silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. Also, we do respect everyone here, so just a few housekeeping rules. When somebody is speaking, they have the floor, they speak. We don't boo, shout, yay, clap, yell, none of that. They speak, they sit down. No whispering while other people are talking and causing a disturbance because our wonderful police officers in back of the room, Mayor Baum's not going to give you a warning and say quieten down, they're going to come back and tap you on the shoulder and say come on, and they're going to ask you to leave our meeting. And we will welcome you back at the next meeting. So, we respect everyone and we respect everyone's thoughts and opinions here because we are all equal. So with that being said, please stand for the prayer by Reverend Booth and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Richard Jackson.
Good morning. Oh God, we thank you for being God. We recognize you as sovereign who has all power. We acknowledge you Lord God for you say you will direct our path. We pray God for peace in the city, we pray for your guidance, we pray for our mayor, councilmen, and staff. We give you glory in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's look the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Jackson, and thank you Reverend Booth. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, machines?
Mr. Anderson, I have no clarification on our agenda item, business agenda item number eight, it's listed on the back sheet, it's the item presented by me, and this is not my item, this is the council.
Okay, that would be the request of Councilman Alvin, so we will change it to Councilman Alvin's. Mr. Anderson, can you mute yourself, mute your phone? You got a lot of background noise. Mr. Anderson? Councilman Anderson had some surgeries under the weather, so he's unable to attend, he is attending remotely. Councilman Anderson? Can you mute your phone, please? Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order of approval with change of business discussion item number eight to the request of Councilman Dante Alvin instead of the city manager Polly Enset?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by our city manager, Ms. Shancy.
Negotiated Commerce Market will be held the second Saturday of every month from May through September, starting at eight a.m. until twelve P. M. at George Martin City Park. And Tasty Thursday will be August twenty-fourth, starting at eleven a.m. at Plummer City in the Mall.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That brings us to our presentation agenda, and we do not have none, so we move on to the business agenda item number one, resolution directing the placement of lanes on properties located in Gochay, Mississippi for fees and charges incurred by the city of Gochay to abate the unsafe conditions of vacant structures pursuant to Mississippi Code, section twenty-one dash nineteen dash eleven, by our planning director, Mr. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to approve the actual cost of the work performed on fifteen twenty-eight Latin Road, and this allows staff to apply the lien for the county requests.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution directing the placement of the lanes on properties located in Gochay, Mississippi for fees and charges incurred by the city of Gochay to abate the unsafe conditions of vacant structures pursuant to Mississippi Code, section twenty-one dash nineteen dash eleven?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
I just want to thank the city staff and everybody working to get the property looking clean and making the neighborhood look nice. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Jack Anderson? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, consider a request for a ten-foot, three-inch secondary front yard variance for a privacy fence in a R-one low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at eighteen seventeen Amar East, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-three dash twenty-five dash VAR, PID number eight five zero 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 one one dot zero zero zero, by our planning director, Mr. Scott Anderson.
Yes, Mayor, this request was given to the planning department from David Harris. The application fee of one hundred and seventy-five dollars is paid on June twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, and all public notice requirements have been met. The applicant would like to build a six-foot privacy fence and enclose a swimming pool. This house is on a corner lot, the side yard that's adjacent to the street on the corner lot is considered a secondary front yard and must meet the twenty-five-foot setback without a variance arrangement. You will need the ten-foot three-inch variance to the secondary front yard setback to put the fence, it will be proposed to put the fence up. Included the definition hardship in your packet for your review, and the criteria for approval for a variance is listed in four eighteen four, and these by the governor's ordinance. The planning commission recommends that the city council approve the ten-foot three-inch variance to the secondary front yard setback for the fence. The city council may approve the variance as requested, approve the variance if it changes, or deny the variance request. I've included the excerpt from the GPC meeting, and the four-pack maps, and the complete packet for review, and the questions I'll continue to ask more about.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation to approve a request for a ten-foot, three-inch secondary front yard variance for a privacy fence in a R-one low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at one eight one seven Amar East, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-three dash twenty-five dash VAR, PID number eight five zero 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 one one dot zero zero zero?
I make a motion, will you approve planning commission's recommendation?
Got a motion by Councilman College? Got a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
This is a side yard, right? That's what you was.
I was looking at the map and I wanted to make sure that it was exactly the side yard.
Okay, thank you. No comment, no further comments.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No.
I'm sorry, Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, consideration of a special exception that would allow a duplex in a R-three mobile manufactured home residential district located at seven three zero four River Music Drive, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-three dash twenty-six dash S.E., PID number eight seven one one six zero seven nine dot zero zero zero, by our planning director, Mr. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is coming from Councilman Gilat for the special exception that would allow duplex in an R-three mobile manufactured home residential district. The application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars is paid on June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, and all public notice requirements have been met for this case. The lot size is approximately point two six acres, there is potable wastewater, potable water wastewater disturbance available. The current surrounding zoning in this area is R-three mobile manufactured home residential, and comprehensive plan's future land use designation is mobile home residential. I've included in the discussion section of your report the review criteria for the special exceptions outlined in the ordinance. Planning commission, after hearing this case, recommends the city council approve the special exception with the rendering presented, so the applicant presented the rendering of the actual structure he proposed to build, and they approved it with the contingency that he built it as the rendering shows. City council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception if changes, or deny the special exception. Again, I've included the excerpt from the meeting and the complete packet for review.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council to approve the planning commission's recommendation of a special exception that would allow duplex in a R-three mobile manufactured home residential district located at seven three zero four River Music, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-three dash twenty-six, S.E., PID number eight seven one one six zero seven nine dot zero zero zero?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman?
With planning commission recommendation?
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Yeah, is the applicant here? I read through the excerpts of the planning commission's recommendation and some of their concerns, specifically, you know, vehicle parking, it's kind of a narrow street and having a duplex. I like the rendering, it's a two-story building. Being the lot size, is your intent to place this structure further away from the street than your other structures would be? I know we have our twenty-five-foot setback, but it'd probably be better if you went a little bit further back to allow for driveway parking for.
Mr. Alvin, can you just stand there and state your name and address for the record, for the clerk?
The next lot, it's my parents' house, and the house is about forty-five feet from the road, and we plan to put the duplex at the same way. That way we have a parking for three, four cars on each apartment if you need.
So will it be a single Y driveway or will it be a double Y?
Double.
It'll be two Ys?
Two, double driveway.
Two double driveways. Mr. Alvin, can you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, yes, Jefferson McGee, my house is?
The address, you just don't? Try the address.
Seven three hundred River Miss Drive in motion.
Thank you. Okay, so, and you are doing a two-story structure?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to do a two-story, that way we save a lot of space on the lot, to make like a bigger driveway, have a big nice backyard, and I'm planning to try to do that, the duplex on the side, because my parents live over there, it's almost a low house on the road, and bring some more people, and make a nice road.
I certainly appreciate you investing in our community. This is kind of a setting a precedent as far as allowing this type of structure in this zoning. I'm hoping it will actually be a benefit rather than a hindrance, so you're kind of our first staple of trying this year, so thank you for covering the privacy and investing in the city.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have. Mr. Gilat?
Well said, Mr. College, no comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
I just want to echo what Councilman College said, you know, this will be a new thing in this neighborhood, and I think it's a great investment, and I think it's needed in our community, and I think it will make that community just bloom out there. I just think it will shine and be inviting to the other residential neighborhoods around there. If they were able to see the renderings, they would be ecstatic, so once again, we thank you for investing in our city.
I appreciate it, thank you.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat, all in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, you can see Mr. Anderson tomorrow. Business agenda item number four, consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow recreational vehicle, known as an RB, on our individual lot in the MURC, M-W, Mixed Use Recreation Commercial, Mary Walker Zoning District, Mary Walker Drive, GPC number twenty-three dash twenty-seven dash CU, PID number eight seven four two zero zero four three dot zero zero zero, by planning director, Mr. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department received this request from Eddie Pearson. The application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars is paid on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, and all public notice requirements have been met for this case. The total area, to be accurate on the property, the total area of the property is point one five acres. The existing land use at the moment is vacant, and comprehensive plan's future land use designation for this lot is recreational commercial. I've included the review criteria for a major conditional use as outlined in the ordinance, along with the applicant's responses and the staff's findings for those. After hearing this, the planning commission recommends that the city council approve the request as presented. The council may approve the planning commission, approve the case of the planning commission's conditions, approve the condition of each major changes, or deny the condition of use major. The attachments, I've included the excerpt again, and the complete packet for review.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation for a conditional use major permit that would allow recreational vehicle on our individual lot in a M-W Mixed Use Recreation Commercial, Mary Walker Zoning District, Mary Walker Drive, GPC number twenty-three dash twenty-seven dash CU, PID number eight seven four two zero zero four three dot zero zero zero?
I make a motion, the council approved the planning commission recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Just a little background on this, this is requested by the new owner of Kiki Marina, so once again, somebody else is investing in our community. Welcome you on board, and he is utilizing this property for his father, law company when he visits.
Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George? And we do appreciate Mr. Pearson investing in our community. We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Jackson, I mean, Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five, authorization to acknowledge bids and award the contract for Shepherd State Park Expansion Project and to award the contract to the lowest and best bidder, Gulf Coast Solutions LLC, for the base bid of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, and additive alternate number one for six hundred and nine thousand, four sixty-one and twenty-nine cents, and the amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-eight cents, by our Grants and Projects Director, Mr. Kim, Ms. Kim Sash.
We received five bids for this project, and this came in, was the best. The funding for the project is to upgrade the existing system out there, and we end up with ten additional RB spots with the source of funding for this is the twenty-two Level Improvement Project Fund from the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Sash. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion from council to acknowledge the receipt of the five bids for Shepherd State Park Expansion Project and award to the contract to the lowest and best bidder, Gulf Breeze Solutions, for the base bid of six hundred and fifty thousand, three sixty-nine twenty-nine cents, and added alternate number one, six hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, twenty-nine cents, and the amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and sixty-six dollars, eight hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-eight cents?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman George, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
I did talk to our city engineer earlier today and asked some questions regarding the bid tabulations and the kind of discrepancies and the mathematical errors that were corrected, and just the variations versus the other bidders. He assured me with the recommendation letter that he's confident this contract will do the job accordingly. I asked him, don't cut any slack, so let's get this project going and complete it well.
Thank you, Councilman College, Councilman Gilat?
I thought you said Gulf Breeze Solutions, it's Gulf Coast Solutions.
Oh, I apologize, I said Gulf, I meant Gulf Coast if I said Gulf Breeze. For the records, it's Gulf Coast Solutions.
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Anderson. That brings us to business agenda item number six, authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Mississippi Department of Marine Resources to accept GOMESA funding for Hickory Hills, La Grange, and Catito Water Quality and Stormwater Runoff Improvement Project by Ms. Kim Sash.
This is almost two point eight million dollars. This is the award from last year's GOMESA by two thousand and twenty-three, and to remind y'all, we just approved the application bid for twenty twenty-four for two point seven million for Martin Love and Hickory Hills sewer improvements. So this is the MOU for last year's.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a motion from council to authorize to enter to the memorandum of understanding with Mississippi Department of Marine Resources to accept the GOMESA funding for the Hickory Hills, La Grange, Catito Water Quality and Stormwater Runoff Improvement Project?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Alvin? Second by Councilman College, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
This is huge for our area, and I appreciate everybody that was involved in making this happen. I hope it can happen exponentially, because it's needed very much in our area. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Like Councilman Alvin said, this is sorely needed, and I want to thank Councilman Alvin, city staff, our city engineer, and our state legislators for helping make this all happen. This is going to be a great improvement to an area that constantly has water inundation problems. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman College, Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
I echo what Councilman College, Councilman Alvin says, and I just want to thank our city manager for seeing the need when it's raining and flooding, and we go out there, and Councilman College is out there, and then Councilman Alvin was elected, he's been out there, it's been a needed project for many, many years. It goes on and on, and the residents out there, some are here this evening, that their roads are flooded and stormwater situations, and you can't get out, you can't get your small sedans in and out if you don't have a big SUV or truck. So kudos for our city manager working with engineers and our state legislatures for seeing the need and approving this funding for us to be able to do this for the residents.
We have a motion by Councilman Alvin, a second by Councilman College, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number seven, it's the Docket of Claims, our city clerk and comptroller, she provides those to us on the website and in our packets, we've already received them, so she is the one, that is her presentation to the board and council, and they're available online to the residents. Do we have a motion, does any, we have any public comments on the Docket of Claims? None? Do we have a motion to approve the Docket of Claims?
Make a motion, we approve the Docket of Claims, provided that all entries there are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
Got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Alvin, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda number eight, discussion regarding the potential no-wake zone, which is in an area just north of I-ten, and south, goes north to just north of the entrance to the Hickory Hills Country Club, by Councilman Alvin.
Well, for all of you that came here in reference to this topic, how this discussion started was with concerned citizens that lived in that general area, concerned about the issue of safety, the issue of the wakes causing damage to their bulkheads. And while I had the floor, I'd like to thank anybody that was here that day that assisted with the rescue of the father and son. Are you here? Anybody, I know one is too, thank you so much for taking that step to go out there and help. A lot of people turn a blind eye and keep on going, but you stopped and helped. It potentially saved their lives, but thank you for that, taking that step. But as I said, the discussion was brought up by concerned citizens, and you know, my position is, we are a democratic society, and all governing bodies that operate within a municipality, or the local government, or state, federal government, should be operating under these principles. My position is that I represent all residents of our community, whether or not we have the same opinion or opposing opinions. Once I received the residents' concern about the impact that this might have on this community, I feel it's my responsibility to facilitate conversation with members of the council, the directors in the city departments, as well as the citizens that reside in the affected areas or areas that might be impacted by these type of decisions. So here we are at this point, where I contacted the city attorney and requested to see how this process even starts. You know, my background's law enforcement, I can tell you pretty much anything that goes on on the streets in surrounding neighborhoods in this areas, general areas of different cities, but when it comes to the waterway, I'm a novice. I do have a boat, I do enjoy the water, and at no point in time does this, was this decision made in a way to, I guess, affect the quality of life of the folks that live on the river. It's strictly in reference to the safety, and it's strictly related to the people that are directly affected in that area. And I see the concerns on both sides, and like I said, when we brought this issue to the city attorney, the city attorney contacted Department of Marine Resources. Their email replied to us, so you're aware, is what we needed to do was to provide coordinates, coordinates in the areas where we wanted this wake zone, proposed wake zone, take The chief of the DMR, he informed us that this process, we must obtain the coordinates starting and ending points of the proposed wake zone, and this will determine and requires a resolution from the city and possibly the county or both. If and when appropriate resolutions are approved and sent to the chief of DMR, he will conduct an investigation into the impacts of a no-wake zone on boaters. So that's where the proposal is at this point, to see whether or not there's, it's even feasible to have a wake zone in this general area. So if it's approved by the commission, we or the county can adopt an ordinance in which it will be enforced jointly by the DMR and local governments if possible. So at this point, we're just basically in the conversation point of whether or not it's needed, or are there other options that we can have in place as opposed to the wake zone? Now, we, everybody that contacted me via emails or cell phone, whatever it was, I responded to them to please come here and voice your opinion. The reason is, I mean, this is the perfect setting to voice your opinion, you have every director that works in the city, you have every councilman, the city attorney, and city manager. We're here at the ready to answer questions. This is the perfect place to do it, and that's why we called for this discussion here tonight. So with that, I'll open the floor to?
Actually, is that your presentation, Mr.?
Yes.
So the city ordinance, when we have an agenda item, unfortunately, agenda items only can allow fifteen minutes. only can allow 15 minutes by ordinance, by agenda item for citizens to comment. That is voted on, it's in the city charter, that's the city ordinance. So we only have 15 minutes for this agenda item, and you can only, the residents, speak, the max that speak on this agenda item for three minutes. Councilman College is always our timekeeper at the board meetings. He starts after you state your name and address at the podium. He holds up this piece of paper for number one, and that means you've got one minute left. I know there's a lot of people here tonight. I know there's family members up here that was involved in the boating accident, and we sympathize with you all, and we are praying for the recovery of your family members. Echo what Councilman Alvin says, that we want to thank, and you all are heroes who helped the agencies on that accident. We've heard, as Councilman College said, Alvin said from everybody, and we are here to hear everybody's concern, but in a fashionable way. So we know everybody is not going to be able to speak in that timeframe we're allotted, unfortunately, but you will be able, if we have any left at citizen comments, and you still feel you want to comment, you're more than welcome to speak at the citizen comment section for the duration, and that's a limited amount of time also. So we will do that, and then if you still don't have time and want to speak, you can contact each one of us or grab us before we leave here this evening and/or call by cell phone or by email, and we'll be glad to address your concerns. So with that being said, the first citizen to come, and before we do that, in case you don't get to speak, we'll do a show of hands. How many are for a wake zone? Raise your hand. How many people are against a wake zone?
Mayor, did you give us that count?
Just count.
I have 34, unless somebody has different. I have 34 against, and I have six for.
Six.
There was one, two, three, four, five, six, so seven. Raise four again, raise your hands unless... One, two, three, four, five, six. There was one of these not up earlier. There's eight. Sorry, some were lower and I didn't see their hands. My apologies.
Mayor.
So we have eight for and eight against.
Can I say one other thing?
Eight for, thirty-four against.
There is confusion on where those coordinates were as far as the wake zone, how long it was. The wake zone will start at the entrance to the Hickory Hills, the dock that they built, all the way down to just south of Stanfield Point Road near Mr. Floyd's house. So it doesn't reach all the way down to I-10, like that was what was being reported.
Right. Well, I think some people accidentally thought it was going all the way to Bluff Creek, and some thought it was coming all the way down. Yeah, to Highway 90. So yes, that was why I stated earlier what I said. Okay, so the first citizen up is Mr. Floyd Steele.
So I'm gonna get a minute warning.
You would have. State your name and address.
Counselor.
Councilman Anderson, can you mute your phone?
I can mute your phone. Okay.
When do we start now?
Go ahead.
Okay. A couple of things on this that I would like to submit. First, I'm very sorry for the loss of life of the accident. The people got hurt, and I think that's terrible. I've been up there about 24 years. I have a neighbor that's been here 38 years, to our knowledge. That's the only serious accident we've had in that general area. The river is reasonably wide there. I don't think that the people who live on the river should have the deciding voice in this, and that includes myself. I've got about 600 foot on the river when you go up. That river belongs to the public, and so I think a voice should be heard from everybody, not just the citizens of Gomesa, but people all over the county, and maybe the people that live in Laurel and Hattiesburg that come down here and use that river. Anybody that uses the river should have an equal voice. So it shouldn't be just decided by a few of my neighbors that they live on the river. That's, I'm sorry. Second, let's talk about safety. I'm gonna give his name, but he said he will. One of my neighbors that's lived up there 38 years saw the entire accident, and originally saw he was impressed with the bigger boat. He said, I liked it, it's older boat, it's going on about 10, 12 knots. The other boat, the bass boat that hit it actually was on, they were on the opposite side of the river. They were only two boats on the river, and the one boat went up, and for some strange reason, it started, it actually had to come back to hit the other boat. So the guy had a stroke or what, he never let up. He, you know, he just like never backed it down, he just boom, right straight into it. So it was a freak accident. It was terrible. It was bad. Let me tell you something, that's not gonna be the last one we have on the Pacific River. Okay, one minute. So here's why I think the safety aspect, you're gonna create a problem because you're gonna averve a lot of that traffic that's going up and down that river now over to Swift Boat, which is a parallel body of water that runs down to I-10. That boat cannot handle the traffic. So people have to go 30 minutes slow, or even if it's 20 minutes. I probably would do the same thing if I lived up there. I'd just go down Swift, very dangerous boat. So you're gonna create a safety hazard, not stop a safety hazard. And you know, that's, that's my opinion. As far as buccal, when you buy on the river, in fact, if you buy anywhere, any of you that own water property, when you purchase that property, I hope you have enough wherewithal to know that you're going to have to invest in bulkheads and maintenance. It costs me a fortune. I can't do it all at one time, I need some now. So I mean, that's part of living on the river. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Next citizen, Jonathan Hyatt.
Good evening. Appreciate y'all up here for me tonight. Name John Hyatt, I live at 7416 Riverview. I am in support of a no wake zone, and Mr. Alvin, he, as we raised our hand, I actually worked the accident. It was pretty bad. We got the guy, the dad's still in ICU, and the son's had five surgeries, I was told today. Maybe the no wake zone area is a little bit too large, but I can tell you that curve is dangerous. I see near misses all the time. Me and my wife sit out back, and we see stuff all the time where people are just about hitting each other. So you know, it is wide and part of that river, but in that curve right there, it's necked down, and that sandbar across from me actually protrudes out into the water, and you have probably that much of it you can't even see, you shatter. So it is necked down right there. You know, I, my main objective is safety. I'm not worried about a bulkhead. I'm just worried about people not getting hurt. So that's, that's why I'm in support of it. I've had 20, 24 years of public safety of retired firefighter, so you know, I've seen a lot of trauma, a lot of accidents. I don't want to have to do it in my backyard, I will, every time. Oh, hell, because that's my nature, and that's what I do. You know, it's up to you guys to move forward with it or not, but I will say I'm a reasonable person in that if you decide not to move forward to no wake zone, I'm willing to work with you guys or some of these guys that are opposed to it to come up with a solution to slow them down at least in the curve. Because that's my main concern, is I don't want to see somebody get hit or do a body recovery. You know, I don't know if I've got three minutes, but that's really about all I got. Y'all got anything for me as far as?
I appreciate you coming, John, and if the board does, when we get time for our council comments, we'll address it, because I think we're gonna have to go on to citizen comments here for some more to have questions.
And look, I'm willing to dedicate my time and money to maybe create some signage, caution signs or something, you know, just to slow them down. If it's unreasonable for that area, I'm good with that. But you know, it's gonna be up, y'all get going with it. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you. That brings us to Skylar Heisler. And I just want everybody to know, I know this is gonna be touching for him, so please be patient with him, and it was his loved one that was involved, so just be patient.
Like Mr. Steele and Mr. Hyatt said, I do appreciate everybody that was there that day when this happened, and add what Mr. Hyatt said, that, that is a very dangerous corner, and add to what Mr. Steele said, Swift Bayou is, it's, it's not very wide. And I understand that putting traffic through there, it's not a good idea, but you're not gonna have boaters go into the same extreme speeds and cutting corners and everything else when you go through there, because they know they don't have as much room like they have out there on the main river. When you've got somebody coming up river at 72 miles an hour, and you've got those kids on the sandbar that are playing, or somebody's out there too, they come around that corner and don't see somebody in the water because they're not paying attention, they're just being careless, something like this happens again if something's not changed. This is, something has to be changed here, because this is, this is not just a freak phenomenon, this is people being careless and thinking they know the waterway better than they know the back of their hand. Something needs to change in that area. That's all I got.
Thank you. That brings us to James Willis.
James Willis, 7600 Bluff Point. Myself and a gentleman over personal on the sand. This has nothing to do with bulkheads, docks, boats. It's strictly about the speed people come around that sandbar. I was actually in my boat plotting points to go out offshore. My boat went in the water, struck in there. This is strictly about that sandbar and that turn. It's a blind turn. Why do we not have a no wake zone? It's a blind turn. Now you have Marina going in Hickory Hills. People coming out with Marina, you've got another blind turn up there. It does not have to go all the way to Floyd's house. Doesn't have to go that far. Go from Hickory Hills to the sandbar. There are two blind turns right there. If I hadn't heard to hit two gentlemen that he knew, that he knows, might have died that day. Both were lifelighted out of Goche. All because of people being careless, you know, blind turn, because the sandbar had been stuck in the water. DMR took care of the stump. At this point, you've all received a letter from Adam Murray's, from my wife, Janay Williams. I'm pretty sure you're all ready. At this point, Goche can now be sued, the city itself can now be sued for anything that happens on that water. It has nothing to do with a no wake zone. It takes 10 minutes to go from Floyd's house to Hickory Hills. 10 minutes, that I, 30 minutes, why don't you go up Swift Bayou? 10 minutes, that I, go to Pine Island, everybody, islands past Pine Island. Let's be honest, this is about safety, not bulkheads. Two blind turns. At this point, the city's on notice. The next citizen, he will be sued, not by anybody we know, I hope, but let's be honest, there needs to be a no wake zone. Thank you.
Mr. Janey Steele.
Janey Steele, although I'm a big fan of 1025 Hillside Hollow, I have boys, brother. I grew up in Goche, know that area well. I know accidents are not gonna stop on the river. This is tragic. I know they're emotional, and those who want a wake zone, I understand that, but if you look at how much traffic comes to that area, and you look how many accidents they have, that's real. And that's anywhere in any state, United States, people die because you're doing 60, 70 miles an hour. You're not paying attention. Bad things happen. You know, I know they're emotional, and they're, I understand that, but a no wake zone, it's not gonna solve. Easy to say to do.
Mr. Anderson, I apologize. Mr. Anderson, can you please mute your phone? Councilman Anderson. Okay, because the... But can you please just mute your phone until we need you?
I turned it all the way off, and it's still doing it.
Yeah, we can hear everything.
Go ahead, okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Steele.
I can see putting up some posters, signs, be careful, dangerous curves, stuff like that, but there's a lot of issues out there, and there's a lot of accidents, and putting a no wake zone in there, whether you want to claim this for bulkheads or because of an accident, it's a horrible accident, cause people, blood pain yourself. I don't see it. It's gotta be a decision that's not made on emotions, that don't count courtesy for airplane, because they're not the only ones that are using that route.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. That brings us next to Mr., how many more is next? Mark Miller.
Name's Mark Miller, live on 809 Powell Point, a little ways from Fontaine. So I live north of the zone that we're talking about potentially having a no wake zone. I use the river all the time. It's one of the reasons I moved to Goche about six years ago. I will say I've never had a near miss out there. I'm out there almost every week. I'm definitely opposed to a no wake zone. I feel bad that somebody had an accident. There are accidents on our highways, on the interstate, on roads, all the time. We do not go out there and slow the traffic down to two or three miles an hour because of an accident. I mean, it's a fact of life, things happen. I've had a lot of near misses on the interstate, on the highway, never on the water. I pay attention, I don't run at excess speeds. We have law enforcement in boats, we have DMR, we have marine fleets, we have Coast Guard, I see them all the time coming up the river. All they gotta do is enforce the rules of law. You might have noticed, everybody, it's a little hot out there these days. When you're in a aluminum boat and you're going high speed down that, through that area, you could have heatstroke. It's so hot out there, it's miserable. So one other thing I'd like to mention, property values, people that live north of a no wake zone are gonna suffer. Some people buy a house on Bayou on water Hickory Hills, they're thinking about taking their boat out to the islands, going to Gulf, going fishing. They don't want to wake up extra early to try to get there. They want, they want cruise, reasonable speed, and get to where they go. So I think, I think that pretty much covers everybody else's cover of things. I feel bad, and I feel sorry for that accident, but I'm definitely opposed to a no wake zone.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. With that, we have reached our time limit for comments for this business agenda item. So at this time, you know, we've heard everybody and their pros, cons, but we can hear more in the citizen comment section. We'll go through the ones, and then we'll revert back to this for the additional ones who want to speak. Is there anything, Councilman Alvin, you wanted to say, anything else, or where you just wanted to be discussion?
Well...
We don't have presented to the board tonight a resolution, but if you wanted to make a motion?
I like, I guess based on what I've seen as far as the votes, I make a motion to rescind my request for the feasibility study by DMR due to the majority of the residents requesting waterways remain as is, but, well, that's the motion, but I'd like to follow up on that.
Is there a motion, or is it just rescinding? Well, you don't even have to, we didn't, you didn't ask for nothing, so we don't need a motion. You don't have to request nothing to come back either. So no wa- So no action's taken, but I think what Councilman Elvin is trying to say, I could be wrong, but I know as the mayor, I sympathize and understand and see the need. Also, the gentleman who his bulkhead and peer were not used in this accident, who was not able to be here tonight, um, and he sympathized with everybody, and he was the landing area, I guess, for the accident, he was opposed to the no wakes zone. Um, and he told me to please share that with my board this evening, because he called right before the meeting, and that's what, um, I wanted to do, and my comments was share that. But I think what Councilman Elvin is sort of suggesting is let's look at some signage, probably.
That's what I was gonna say.
And ask for, um, enforcement by the other agencies.
The follow-up to that was, maybe, I, I would encourage or make suggestions that there's a grassroots movement from the community in that general area to come up with solutions that might be better than a wakes zone. Maybe the slow signs or the buoys that are in the middle of the water, I mean, it's a good concession. Maybe there's some ideas out there that I don't know about. Make that movement, make that suggestion, and we'll revisit it, and bring this back up and send that to the DMR. But I would request that if, if we do a petition, that it be a majority vote for the people in the community that it affects directly.
So, if anybody else, um, Mr. Mike, if you wanna comment, you're gonna have to do it in citizen comments, I apologize, um, on this topic. So, Councilman College is asking that no action, really besides what he just said, I mean, Councilman Elvin, be done. So at this time, unless a board member wants to say anything, um.
I do have a couple of questions.
We will, okay, go ahead.
Do we, has there been investigation of what the cause of this crash was?
They wouldn't, the agency, I reached out to the agency to get the number of the crashes. The agency said one, I asked for a twelve-month period, the only one they could recall is this one. They could not tell us anything but data ongoing investigation.
Cause was, because I'm hearing different, different versions, like kinda turn around and came back and hit the boat, whether it was head-on, side-on, I didn't witness it, I know those people, there are people that did. Uh, then the second question is, does the city technically have any jurisdiction over this area river? We do not. So, so the city being liable for any incidents and crashes on that is, is not within our jurisdiction. That's DMR and the county, is my understanding, is that correct?
Yes.
But they would, they might be in code enforcement.
Gotcha. So in that email, it suggested that there are possibility that we would be involved in, I guess, generating the proclamation. Right. We don't have, because the confusion came in for me, is I thought it was the jurisdiction of DMR.
I think, I think it is the juris-, well, it definitely is the jurisdiction of DMR, it's just a matter of it, it, it could be requested that the commission approve it by a local government, maybe the county, maybe the city or state, so.
But unless they got the coordinates, they would, they would not.
They would not, right.
That's right. Okay, that's the other question, I think.
Any other councilmen have any questions?
Uh, yes. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Anderson.
Yes, I, I agree with, uh, the, the fact that we probably need to have a conversation with the, uh, county, marine patrol, and the DMR in patrolling that area on Saturdays and Sundays during, uh, you know, the rush of people playing on the river, riding up down the river. Try to patrol the area and have people slow down. And they've had to do that in the past at Pine Island and, and other places. So that's a discussion we need to get into and ask them and see if there's something they could do. So.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have any other comments or questions, Councilman Anderson?
No, no, that's it.
Okay. Okay. Then we will move on, and the ones you'll still be able to speak as citizen comments, we'll go back down the list if you still want to speak. That brings us to consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are approved in one motion unless the council member, um, removes them. So consent agenda item number one, approval of the council meeting minutes from regular council meeting out of August the first, twenty-twenty-three. Two, receive July twenty-twenty-three privilege license reports. Three, authorization to accept monetary donations for the city of Goshay's Cruisin' Through the Decades event. Four, approval to waive all fees associated with the use of Shepherd State Park for the Goshay High School cross-country team practices. Five, approval of sponsorship for the twenty-twenty-three Goshay Mullet and Music Festival. Eight, can y'all please shut the back door? Five, approval of the sponsorship for the twenty-twenty-three Goshay Mullet Music Festival. Six, approval of an addendum to Delta Computer Systems Software Supports Agreement for Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four. Seven, approval of water and sewer adjustments for August twenty-twenty-three in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Eight, approval of the non-explosive facility use agreement with Diamond Dogs Stockpile Organization for Buddy Davis Park. Nine, approval of a non-explosive facility use agreement with three, P-three-sixty Performance Sports for Buddy Davis Park. Ten, approval of a non-explosive facility use agreement with extra innings for Buddy Davis Park. And eleven, resolution requesting assistance from Jackson County, Mississippi. Does any council members want to approve, remove any? Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through eleven?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion? Oh, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda, and that is citizen comments. Um, and you have three minutes to speak, and you come to the podium, just like before you heard, state your name and address. Um, uh, first, we'll go through here and then reserve, um, revert back to the wakes zone. Um, and remember, we have a total of, um, thirty minutes total, so, seven twenty-seven. Richard L. Jackson. Thirty minutes for citizen comment. I'm going back here, too, because this is citizen comments, and this was a business, I don't know.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since I didn't know Councilman Anderson was sitting, Councilman Anderson, I wish you'd speak for cover. My name is Richard L. Jackson, I'm the first vice president of Moss Point Branch of the Jackson County Chapter of the NWAACP. I reside at forty-five, forty-eight, Yell Street, Moss Point, Mississippi. I'm here on the alleged post paid by Councilman Anderson. Thirty days ago, Councilman Anderson stated that he was gonna send me his thirty-nine pages from his Facebook account I have yet to receive. I reached across the aisle to bring this to a close, so then therefore, we won't be interrupting the city's business. Three weeks ago, I turned around and I sent Councilman Anderson information to help improve his innocence, even though that's not what we know until. Councilman Anderson is there, and I asked for his MAC address, which would prove his innocence inside the three minutes, approve his gift. I haven't heard from him, and we know him to call and text and talk to each other. So what I'm proposing today is that you, uh, Goshay City Councilor and Mayor, would sanction Alderman Anderson's pay, based on the fact of his conduct. And case law, based on the state of Mississippi, has already been established to use. And the legal lawyer, you can look it up, and I'll wait. If you come back and say, no, we can't sanction him, then we'll live with it. But if you can sanction it, I believe that if you sanction it and start out, I take fifty percent of his pay, and every thirty days after, twelve and a half percent, until four months have passed, until you get to a hundred percent, Councilman Anderson will make a quick, fast decision, give him and his lawyers, because the information that I gave to him was for his lawyer and his information technology person, which would help prove Councilman Anderson's innocence. I'm not here to, um, ask for his resignation, I'm here to try to put an end to this thing. And in my research, I found out that you guys said it wasn't nothing that you could do, but to do a little research, the sanctions can be placed. And that's all I'd like to say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Charles Moore.
My name is Charles Moore, I live in eighteen-twenty of Westgate Park, Goshay, Mississippi. I appreciate the sign y'all put up in Westgate tonight, but, uh, I'm here to remark, answer made about African-American. I think he need to resign, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Dela Moore.
Dela Moore, eighteen-twenty of Westgate Park, Goshay. I have a lot to say, but I'd like to look at Anderson, his face, so I'm gonna deserve my comment, let someone else speak, because he has not proven it, and the lawyer's sit there, and we're paying him, and nothing's been done about those racist statements that he allegedly made, it's not proven it, so when he come, I look him face to face.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ben Coleman.
Oh, Coleman.
Alicia Alexander.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman.
Good evening, Ms. Alexander.
I'm Alicia Alexander. The business address I'm here to speak about is twenty-four-zero-four, that near Old Goshay Church, from the Rock Creek. Sorry, I can't take my last, I'm, 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 but, uh, I'm trying to talk to the guy, I can't, we received a letter here concerning the property being old, drawn, and unkept, which is, I don't know, we just haven't explained it. But anyway, we're right, we're located right between the General Dollar Store and the convenience store, um, going south. And there's a trench, I call it a trench, between the General Dollar Store.
Retention.
I talked to, right, I talked to Councilman Jackson several times. Uh, he's always responded, and done things that, you know, he said he's willing to do. But, uh, I think what they're talking about is the trench, the, uh, tension thing, because, um, I got some pictures that I took lately, and, um, that grass is always overgrown. He's gone to the store, the convenience store, and to the General Dollar Store, and talked to the managers about it, and they'll come out and they are more on the side, but in the middle part, where there's a lot of snakes. Matter of fact, just, uh, last week, we had to call the police department, lieutenant Glenn came out, because one of the trees right where we walked through the doors, through the doors of the church, there were snakes in there. And they're coming from that attention trench out there. Uh, there's paper always in it, and if anyone live down, come down, laughing around all the time, I'm the one that you see out there picking up paper all the time. It's not me, it's one of the other members, but it's sometimes three or four times a day. And the last time I did it, it was so hot, I actually got sick, I can't keep doing that. Councilman Jackson put up a sign, big sign, that says, no littering, it's not helping at all. I've asked him before, is there anything you're gonna do? Uh, for an example, at the, uh, walking track out here at the college, they have those garbage containers, you know, that melt, you know, into the cement, is that something you're gonna do to put down for the people or find the people to do something? Because when they pay, it's not the children, it's the adults, I'm sitting and watch. We have billboards, we have needles, just all kinds, types of things out there that we pick up. And, uh, it's coming from both stores, even there's been containers of seafood. I don't know what the problem was, but this is always up close to the door. It's not just at the edge, this is they're coming up in the property, the property doing this. And I'm watching, nothing but the dust and stuff. And it's just not, it's, you know, it's not us. But something has to be done, because we just can't keep cleaning it up. We've been over there and told them, and the, oh, the brown part.
Ms. Alexander, your three minutes is up, but we will get with you, um, you've got your information here.
Yes.
And we will get the city manager, and the planning director, and the police chief, and Councilman, um, College, and Jackson, and myself, we can all, because it is, that's your representatives. And we will try to come up with a solution to help you. Your request of a trash can is, you know, sensible and easy, but also you're, um, you know, I understand you put your chain up there, but you also could file a thing with the police department, say when y'all are not there, if they see activity, they can get the people off your property.
Taken down for quite some time.
You didn't, you're not keeping it up anymore? Well, we can maybe look at something to help you, so you don't get the people off there when you're not there, because y'all aren't there that.
Yeah, but we have, we have cameras and all that stuff.
Okay, well then we can, the PD could use your camera footage.
Okay.
We'll work with you, we'll find some solution to you.
All right, thank you.
But we stay well, and we'll be contacted.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, now we're gonna go back, that's all the citizen comments, we're going back to the wakes zone citizen comments to finish up. Um, when he can, when we're going down our list, like we.
That's from hotel.
Yes, I mean.
Did you sign the list?
Jeff Strah, where this was the list. I'm sorry, hold on, Mr. Mike McLaughlin, Mr. Jeff is right before you. We're going in the order they signed in.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mike McLaughlin, eight-seven-thirty-one, Bio Castell, Goshay, Mississippi, since nineteen eighty when the mall was built. Uh, don't come up in front of the city council too often, last time, I think it was twenty-five years ago, because a very important thing was happening.
Amen.
Called a high school. Guess what, there was a compromise, said Goshay never get anyone, Goshay got a high school, Pascalula got a high school. Been great history since then. There's always an answer, no good to come here and complain, how about an answer, I already heard already. I've been a boater forty-four years, got over sixty thousand hours on the water. One accident, I'd feel horrible for whoever's family, got injured, it does happen, but, you know, I've been on, I live on Bio Castell, backside of Hickory Hills. You know, we have a no wakes zone, the simple thing would be, okay, maybe we don't go to one or two miles an hour no wakes zone, because I've been boater for so long. Go down the Pascalula River in December or January, and that water's running about seven, eight knots, you're going three knots, there's gonna be an accident, if that's all you're allowed to go. A reasonable speed, seventy miles an hour, no, that's not reasonable at all, I understand that point. That's about the widest part of Pascalula system, which is the longest unimpeded river in the continuous forty-eight states in America, where the accident happens. So it's not, because it was wide, there were two people, there was a problem, that they didn't see, they may not have had control of the boat, whatever. But a reasonable, three miles an hour isn't reasonable either, because guess what? This guy's coming full blast, and I'm only allowed to go three miles an hour. I'm not gonna get out of the way, he's still gonna hit me. You've got, you know, ten miles an hour, fifteen, we're only talking about what, a half a mile, not even a half a mile, really, as we're talking now. You know, at ten miles an hour, you can get through this system, at three miles an hour, you know, you're tacking twenty minutes on someone's trip that wants to go down the river, catch a buckle, truffle, though, bridge, etc. So, I think that would be a simple, I'd be glad to holler on if one come to it. Do we need to spend a half million dollars to do studies to find out that? We should be using common sense, not everyone's tax money. That's what I'm gonna say.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Y'all have a good night.
And we appreciate all you did to help us get that school done, and that's door knocking.
I hope everyone else, I think it's a great.
Mr. Jeff Strah.
Uh, I'm Jeff Strah, seven-six-two-zero, Blount Point Road. I'm the, I bought the notorious Merle Wagner House, which everybody knows Merle Wagner, from what I hear. Uh, I've got the teal blue boat house that's right in the, in the river there. And, uh, we sit out there and watch many times where it almost looks like it's gonna be a bad, bad accident. They come up the river, that sandbar goes way out about halfway, and pushes everybody way over to the side. And, uh, we sit on the dock, and one, a couple of times, we've had to, felt like we had to jump up and run up the way to the dock, because they come so fast around that curve at a high speed, and they start sliding sideways. Uh, I've got five grandkids, and, you know, people would have some respect and slow down. And, you know, people would have some respect and slow down when they're coming through there. You know, kids can't get in the water, they can't have the little boat. Because their little boat, they just keep coming by as fast as they can. And, you know, they're in the boat and it starts bouncing under, under the dock. Sorry. I'm worried about everybody's safety. I don't want to slow everybody down that, that fast. But if there's some way we could give people to be more respectful and slow down, just a little bit, going around there. So you didn't feel like it's going to have, have, drop an accident. By the way, that's, that's my, my dream house. I love the city. I love all y'all. Y'all did a great job. You don't hear answer from me, because I don't complain. I'm happy. I'm happy. But I just worry about the safety for everybody. And I put a new bulkhead in, so, you know, it's, it's hard dealing with the waves. You know, I've, I've seen in other states, like going down ICW, they'll have a sign, "You were responsible for your wake." Now, that makes sense. You're causing the wake. And the damage to somebody's property, that's really you created the wake. You know, I don't know how the law works on that, but I appreciate y'all. Thank you, Tab, to go through all this, give it a thought and prayer. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Strah. We appreciate your investment here in Gochee. Mr. Billy Booth.
Oh, my God. Billy Booth, 1405 Hill Bridge Street, Gochee, Mississippi, 4th Resident. Um, we're here again to highlight that Councilman Anderson needs to act upon the Facebook post that showed up under his name on Facebook. The post was made Sunday, April the 16th. And immediate days following that Sunday, I know of nothing that Councilman Anderson did to address the post. On Friday morning, April the 21st, I text Councilman Anderson and told him, in my opinion, he should resign before things got bad for the city. He replied back and said that he was going to take care of things when he got back into town. He further said that he believes he was hacked in some way. WLOX reached out to Councilman Anderson for a comment, and they reported that his Facebook page had been hacked.
Um, I have faith in this post.
The, uh, he said that he contacted Facebook to obtain proof of his hack being, of his page being hacked. On May 1st, WLOX reported that Councilman Anderson was going to have his attorney to bring proof that his page had been hacked to the council meeting. And I, I'm going to play this, I don't know if you can hear.
On the night, on the night it was posted, his account was accessed from an IP address in Laurel, Mississippi. Multiple witnesses saw Anderson in Gochee that night. We will be attending today's council meeting.
On May 2nd, Councilman Anderson's attorney, Tyler Cox, came to the council meeting and brought a poster board with dates, numbers, and times on it. He noted that Councilman Anderson posted at 9:34 a.m. on April 16th. But at 6:28, um, the, the time of the breach of post, he said the IP address was from Laurel, Mississippi. At 9:54 p.m., Councilman Anderson posted again. And then at 3:49 a.m., uh, April 17th, Councilman Anderson posted again. So the proof that Councilman Anderson wants us to accept is that he posted that morning. But at 6:28 p.m., someone else posted in Laurel, Mississippi. But he posted three hours later after the alleged perpetrator, and then the next morning. But now Councilman Anderson is saying that it wasn't his page. So after all the comments are being hacked, after having his attorney to come here to show that he had been hacked, now he is saying it wasn't his page. So to us, to those that think that we're harassing Councilman Anderson, to those who think that we need to move on, to those who think that he has proven his case, I want you to know that he has not proven his case. And someone else, uh, that someone else made the post. So in other words, in the words of this council, he needs to, um, prove his page had been hacked, or he needs to resign.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Next citizen. Now, I don't know if this is supposed to be April, but it says A.P.R.I. Okay.
Thank you. My name is Michael Middleton. I'm the president of the Gulf Coast East State Philip Randolph. I can state what the brother just said.
Just state your address, Mr. Middleton.
I live in Lockport, 395 6347 30 General I. I have, uh, 15 members that are members of the Gulf Coast East State Philip Randolph. And as the brother was saying, I love all of them. Indian, Mexican, Puerto Rican, it don't matter to me what you are, who you are. I'm going to teach you with respect and dignity. That's all we asking here, Mr. Anderson. If you did it, admit it and resign. If you didn't, prove it. It's just that simple. All of us, in some way, are connected. And it's been proven by DNA. That we're all African descent. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Mr. Lofton Cox.
My name is Lofton Cox, I live in 8641 Diamond Castle. Been living in Gochee for 46 years. And I just want to thank y'all, because I believe this is the kind of pool we need to solve a problem to do. Hear, hear from us. I'm, I'm against the no wait zone. I think most of y'all know that. But I think we, I, I think we need to look at different problems to, to, uh, to, uh, to solve, rather than things that, that are going on here that people want to do on, on the waterways. We are nature's playground, from what I remember. And we don't want to hinder that by, by doing stuff. I think we just need to have people who need to be safer. Uh, and, and obviously, people need to learn how to drive boats. They need to be on the water. But I appreciate it all, y'all. I appreciate the people. I used to live on that bluff, and we had a lot of, a lot of fun there. We never thought it, I've never seen, uh, an accident on that bluff. And lived there, I, I lived there for one year while we were building our house. But I have seen a lot of accidents on the river. And if we're going to start putting signs up at every blind spot, we're going to, we're going to have a problem, Mike. Because I don't, uh, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I know it's not a no wait zone. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton. We appreciate you. And we appreciate you sharing your wife, Missy Lane Cox, with us. Who was a fabulous educator of mine and many youth here. And, Ms. Cox, we appreciate all you had to do in our lives growing up. That brings us to Ms. Susan Robisher.
She's not here.
Sheila. That brings us to Mr. Robisher. I think he's left with her. And that brings us to Bill Burns.
Uh, Bill Burns, I live 3801 Shamark. Been there forever. But I'd like to speak, you've answered one question here on the boundaries or the city limits.
Yes, sir.
It is my understanding that Gochee city limits stop to the west side of the West River. Which I think I brought that up already. And, and the other question I would like to ask is, Gochee already has a no wait order on the books. I don't think much of it. I think it was ill, ill advised when they put it there. I've been in this fight before, twice. Women of Gochee, and those with governor, a past governor. And at one time, they had actually proposed no waiting. Most of Jackson County, all the way to the islands. It went from, it went from an idea to stupid, is the best way I can put it. Now, I'm a father of a son that totaled two boats in Little River. So I can speak from accident. The one that y'all are talking about here, I didn't have any information on it. But the area that you're discussing is one of the largest areas in the Pascua River. And, yeah, a lot of things can be done. And I discussed the sandbar y'all discussed there out there. Maybe a buoy on the end of it would help people swim wider, I don't know. But the corner's not that blind. I drive a little boat now. I'm no longer go 70 miles an hour up down the river. Got too old. But, and even in a little boat now, I tend to have my time staying away from everybody else, because it's survival. And speed limits on the river don't work, because they don't take into account different sized boats. I can take my 16-foot yawn boat, go by you 25 miles an hour, make very little weight. Or 10 miles an hour, make more. A 30-foot boat at 10 miles an hour is going to swamp you. So, if you're thinking about, think about something that works. And consider the different boats. And in other words, I'm against that no wait.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Mr. Gary Brown, did you still want to speak, or you?
Gary Brown, 2517 Tefic Road. About the no wait zone. 36 years old. Been in Gochee my whole life. Probably 40 years up, been running boats. Started off small boats, like Bill Barnes said. Been in boats 70 miles an hour. And that, that, all that weather was part of the whole river. I agree with Bill. There's a lot worse places than this river. I've seen wrecks in other places. Love them, I've never been involved in any. But accidents happen. And I've avoided several of them about, uh, Swift Bayou. And that's exactly what's going to happen if you're going to wait on there. I've probably been through Swift Bayou thousands of times, just like I have that river. Swift Bayou is tiny compared to that river you're talking about. A lot of accidents in there. A lot of running interstate dangers. Especially after you've got flood all along in there. So, boats hit pile and flipped in there. It's just, like Mr. Baldwin said, a lot of it's just, uh, using common sense. When people just use the common sense, I hate accidents. Those wrecks happened right there. Accidents do happen. They're going to do that. Just like on the road, new accidents happen. You just got to be respectful. Let's move on to the no wait zone.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We also appreciate your volunteerism with our youth football league. He ran for many years.
Baseball.
And the, um, baseball. And then also, he is a descendant of, um, our founding fathers and who the city's named after, um, Mr. Gochee. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Charles and Brenda Barnett. Do one of y'all want to speak, or both of you? Here, not, not here. John Davis. You want to speak or not speak? Not here. Danny Richardson. Not here. Catherine Tucker, I think. She left. I think all these were against no wait zone as they called in, they said. Cody Richardson. Or Mr. Richardson. Bradley Leggett. Jefferson Mendati.
He was on the General Dollar, so he.
And also, Mr. Golf. You had said you wanted to speak, Mr. Golf. Did you want to speak? Mr. Bowers, did, yeah, you, did you, did you, your name was on here, did I?
I didn't. Should be by marks.
I didn't, I thought she signed in. You want to go ahead? Okay.
Uh, Gary Bowers, 8135, I'm driving Gochee. Um, I've lived on, first house I bought was in Gochee, right on the bluff, on the river right there. And I've been here four, four and a half years now. And I think some, one, I think my boat is probably the biggest boat on that bluff right now. And like gentlemen said, the slower my boat go, bigger the wake is going to be. So if he's in his little boat, it's just going to push him right out of the way. So I'm against the no wait zone. And, um, and I just think we just all just got to be careful. That's really not a blind spot. I've come around that curve many a times, and I can see everybody on that, that's on that sandbar. So, uh, Councilman Elton, I mean, I know you're getting a lot of calls about it. Um, but I think the majority of us who live on that bluff, we're, we're very careful. We're, we're mindful of what, how, how to operate boats. Um, I've had a boat since I was 10 years old and never had an accident. So, since I've been on the bluff, I have received, yeah, it's a lot of boats back and forth. But it seems the majority of people that are coming around that bluff, around that point, are very careful. Everybody knows what they're doing out there. So I just think we just got to look at what really truly makes sense. It's just using a little bit of common sense versus trying to, we may create of, of something worse than what we already have if you put a no wait zone there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, um, Mr. Bowers. And we appreciate you sponsoring an Organizing Wounded Warriors Fish and Tournament in the city of Gochee and your service. Mr. Darryl Ladner.
Uh, Darryl Ladner, I live on 1316 Tegu Drive out of Hickory Hills. I want to thank whoever is behind the, uh, water flooding issue. We really appreciate y'all that out there. In fact, I had a nice, um, discussion today, this afternoon with WLOX, with Jacobi. And, uh, we touched on about four or five subjects that, uh, needed to negotiate. But I'm, I'm definitely against the no wait zone. I'm big on data. Um, I know my colleague, uh, Ward, um, Danto, mentioned something about bulkheads. I would like to know how many, and I've heard a lot of speakers say, you know, what that, what issue. But I think I did hear you say earlier, people were having problems with their bulkheads. I would kind of like to just get an estimate on how many.
I can give you an estimate of how many.
Yeah.
Now, like, for.
Yeah. I, I put a point.
And you're up there still bulkhead.
Also, I'm big on, I like data on how many accidents. I've been out of here for years, quite a long time. I mean, how many accidents happen out there? Uh, does anybody know?
We'll be able to provide that. We've asked from every agency to provide that, and they didn't get that to us before tonight. But we'll be able to have that at a future event.
Uh, another thing, um, I know someone said something about Gochee might get sued for an accident out there. Uh, the city of Gochee, I mean, I've heard that. What if I have an accident on I-10? Uh, is the state of Mississippi going to get sued? No. I, I, I don't think so. So what would be the difference out on the water and there? The next thing, uh, me and my little Shawaw, Manny Bay, we go to Hickory Hills, we've got a nice boat launch out there right now. We've got boats coming in. We go out there every Saturday and Sunday, down right by the boat launch, and watch all the boats that are out. Ever seen any speeders? Oh, one minute? No, I'm not kidding. No, I don't see any. You know, accidents do happen. And, um, you know, it's, it doesn't, doesn't happen like that. So, um, but, um, maybe the next councilman, I'll have some more ideas what Jacobi and I are talking about. And I would lock that, Lofton Cox made a good, uh, suggestion. We're a river, what did you say, Lofton, we're the, uh, playground or something.
Nature's place.
I'm 67 right now, and I remember when I was like 19, we had one of the biggest bass tournaments right out of Indian Point. I can remember when I was like 17 or 19. They had boats piled up. And I'm talking about bass matches, I'm not talking about these local people there. And if anybody's seen that, just you go in Indian Point, and there's like.
Mr. Ladner, your time's up. But we appreciate you coming to entertaining us tonight. And for those that don't know, Mr. Ladner, he's real big on St. Mary's Church. And he, he used to play Santa Claus up there.
I'm not getting real Santa Claus until I have my ringtone. And thank you, Jacobi, for.
Okay. Well, we appreciate all the citizen comments. We appreciate all of you coming. We are going to continue on down our agenda items, um, here. But I want to personally, um, thank our public safety first responders, um, and our city employees. And also, anybody who's here, who. who's here who you've served our country, um, in the past or currently, um, please raise your hand. We thank all of you for your service. So give them. We now go to councilman comments and we will start with Councilman Elbin because it is the second meeting of the month.
First, I'd like to thank all of employees of City of Gochay. As always, we can't do it without you. Specifically, I'd like to thank, uh, whoever was involved in the cleanup of Grandview Drive. That, that was.
Waste Pro.
Waste Pro, are they still here? Thank you, sir, for taking the time to clean that mess up because it was, it was a mess. I don't know why they felt that was acceptable, but they did and thank you for taking action on that. From what the public, uh, the planning department director said, uh, you went above and beyond your guys did and we thank you. Martin Bluff Road, I got people calling in reference to the grass. I don't know what we could do, but apparently when they're coming out of the, on the intersection, they can't see left or right and it's, it's causing a hazard and they wanna see if we can at least cut it down where they can.
A letter has been sent regarding that matter. I should know something next week.
And for all of you that came out and voiced your opinion on reference to the wake zone, thank you. That's what this forum's for and I hope to see you again on other issues related to our community and how it impacts us because you have a huge say-so in how we operate if you're willing to come down here and voice it where we can hear it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Elbin. Councilman Anderson?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Um, due to the fact that the sound quality is so bad, I can hardly feel what anyone is saying. And the fact that I'm hoarse due to an illness, uh, I don't have any comments tonight.
Okay. Thank you and we pray you get well soon. Councilman College?
Thank you much.
I have no comments.
Thank you. Councilman Glad.
It's great to see people come out and watch this council operate. I've been on here, this is coming on my third term. My last term was after this, I will be too old to do it. But thank all of y'all for coming. It's good to see some familiar faces in here and I know all of y'all are concerned with the city. Just keep coming. We wanna hear your comments. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Councilman Glad. Councilman Jackson?
Ah, yes. Um, I just wanna thank everybody for coming. Um, um, it was a good meeting and, um, I have some, oh, um, on, I've reported Miss Alexander's, uh, issue, um, the grass cutting in the, um.
The titching pond or titching pond?
Yeah, the titching pond, yeah. So I, I did some, uh, one time I did, um, like a volunteer try to clean up because, you know, just trying to hurry up and resolve the problem. It is snakes out there, so they, you know, I understand what, what she's saying because I, I almost picked one up cleaning up, you know, so. And, um, she's keep her property up well. I'm just letting y'all know she keep her property up well, so she does a good job at that. So I'm sure whatever, um, the code enforcers were looking at, it couldn't have been on her property. She keeps it up well. Um, and, um, and the Councilman Anderson, you might wanna mute your, mute your phone. When Reverend Booth got up there, you, we, we heard you whispering. I guess he don't hear me now, his phone, you, you don't hear me now, but I just wanted to mess with him, but I, I'm not really trying to put no pressure on that. But, uh, anyway, um, so, um, yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I have for the day though. That's it. No other comment. And it's freezing up in here, that's the reason why I'm.
It is cold.
Whoever fixed the air conditioning here, man, they did a good job. I mean, I, I'm shaking up here, you know, I'm like, what the world, bro? You know, it's a hundred and ten outside, I know, and it's about below zero up in here.
My family's not in the air conditioning business to let it just sit there.
Yeah, they want it that way. They build the ice box up in here.
So I did not want our firefighters having to stand in a heated lobby and have to go positive, work a fire in the heat and be overexerted. So, um, Mayor Vaughn made sure it was cool for them this evening. You're welcome.
Councilman Jackson?
That's it.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Our private message you is, I said, oh my God, okay?
All right, yes, sir.
Would you be satisfied with that?
That'd be fine.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll private message you.
All right.
I have no comments. I do, but I don't. And I could only imagine. The good Lord is watching after him. Well, it was great to see all of you. I would say a hundred and fifty-plus phone calls regarding a no-wake zone, the judges and emails, the judges, the legislatures, the state elected officials and, um, elected officials in Washington, um, employees contacting you about a no-wake zone. You mentioned no-wake and you talked about getting somebody riled up. I, I just, if everybody that came to a no-wake zone meeting and we had a festival, can y'all imagine what a great attendance we would have? How much fun it would be?
Wait, we do have a festival.
It is. It's called the Mola Festival, but maybe we need one called the No-Wake Zone Festival and get people. Um, it would be a great turnout, but I thank all of you and I sympathize with the family member that has an injured loved one. I also sympathize with the people on the bluff that have to witness possibility of these accidents also. I also know, living here, growing up on the river, there is worse places on the river. I also am well aware of Swift Bayou. My captain that I was on the boat with is here in this room, um, and sits in the back. Um, a boat coming around that curve and you sitting in the middle of the river, well, your boat not able to move and you can't go nowhere, is a dangerous situation on Swift Bayou. So be cautious. Logs floating on Swift Bayou and going at fast rates is very dangerous. So I do think what we came up with tonight, I thank Councilman Elbin for, um, his efforts and understanding and listening to both sides of the citizens and I think we've heard both sides and I think we know which way to move forward to try to work together to come up with something. I also want to thank our city staff. Um, this past Saturday was our farmer's market and the Parks and Rec Department puts it on. I thank them, Rachel Homie, um, JJ, any other recs department, but also we have volunteers from other departments to make things happen. So I wanna thank Addie Bang, also known as Shanda Bang, Sheriff Bang Bang, and the Planning Department. Um, she always goes above and beyond and she was out there and working in that heat, um, was exhausting. I was out there with them. I helped JJ clean up and so they go above and beyond to give things for our citizens to do. So when you see them, thank them for their hard work and dedication to make our city a better place to live and work. Also, we have some events coming up at Baker Park, um, basketball tournaments, um, with the DJ. I encourage you to look and follow our Facebook page and our social media and we thank Sam for keeping you updated on that. Um, he's over here to my right. Um, if you see all that fancy stuff on social media, it's him and then Parks and Rec, they handle theirs, they do a great job too, and the PD and the fire department. Also, is, um, do we have any update? Um, our crime is down still in the city of Gochay. That's something that we should go to our horn about. Um, we are blessed, yeah, we have crime, but our crime is down compared, um, to years past and it continues to remain down and I feel safe and sane, um, we are blessed here. I do wanna remind everybody, if you see any activity in your neighborhood, to call the police department, give a description and they will respond because they are getting a lookout for our safety. Councilman Elbin touched on it and I thank him for acknowledging it. Um, I woke up at, um, about six fifteen, day before yesterday, or yesterday morning and, um, my phone going off already about couldn't get down a road in Hickory Hills, Grandview. Mayor, you gotta come up here and look at this. It's awful. It's awful. Come look. And I was getting dressed to go up there to look and our planning department code enforcement was, and here I am already sending emails with Councilman Elbin, Councilman College, the city manager, police chief, um, planning director, so we could get on it immediately. And our planning department, our code enforcement, he was already on it. He thought he had done something and he did do something. He was going above and beyond and thought he was gonna beat me to telling and then, and he was on Johnny on the spot. Mayor, I got this already. And also our public works director, Ramona Morgan, was already in her office bright and early and responded to it. She was on top of it. But last but not least, if you drive by somebody's residence and it looks empty or it don't look like the resident you might see, you're not doing nothing wrong by calling the police department. Call the police department, let them go out there because you know what? The people who caused the litter did not live in that house. They had it all secured, bagged and confined. A person reporting it saw the people rummaging through it, unbagging it, tumbling it, dumping it, scattering it in the road, blocking the roadway and everything else. So shame on the residents, they're gone. They told code enforcement, they're gone, they moved. So who's left to clean it? Who's gonna clean it? City can't go on private property. Mayor Vaughn was gonna have to work with Councilman Elbin, Councilman College, and us find volunteers to go up there and we were gonna have to put on hands and gloves and recruit people to help clean it up. But kudos to our community partner, kudos to Waste Pro. And Waste Pro, can you stand up back there, David Olson? He is a manager with them and he goes above and beyond, Johnny on the spot, and he sends his staff out there to be a community partner and get it cleaned up today. Thank you, we appreciate it and please let your employee know how much we appreciate them because it was more than just picking up with a grabber. He had to get out there and pick up the glass and all the little paper too. So it wasn't just using a piece of equipment that one person can operate. There's more to it. So thank you, they went above and beyond and we're blessed to have you as a community And that's my positive. So let's continue to work to see Gochay grow, prosper and our economic development and , um, amphitheater is ahead of schedule. So let's continue to stay blessed that it stays ahead of schedule so that economic development driver will be opened in April of twenty twenty-four. With that being said, we go to our city manager, you have any comments, Ms. Shancy? Ms. Montgomery, our city clerk, do you have any comments? And our city attorney, Mr. Danos, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Besides notifying everybody, we cannot be sued over a wake zone. So you can ask one attorney and I work for attorneys, so I can say this, you can ask one, one question and they'll give you an answer. We got a city manager who's a wonderful attorney too. You ask her, she'll give you an answer and we might ask Mr. Danos over here, another attorney and we might get another answer. So every attorney has.
All different.
All different answers sometimes. And then you just gotta pray the one you choose is the best. So we got great attorneys here, um, to represent the city of Gochay. With that being said, I wish you all a blessed week and we'll see y'all, um, on September the fifth, twenty twenty-three. And I also wanna recognize and thank my father, my stepmother, Clark and Loretta Vaughn for coming this evening and the day. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn until September the fifth at six thirty-five.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Jackson, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Get well, Councilman Anderson.